This conference will now be recorded.
All is needed, order. Roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Bowles.
Here.
Mayor Trujillo.
Here.
Commissioner Butcher.
Here.
Commissioner Campos.
Here.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here. Commissioner Bowles will lead us, pray your prayers.
Oh, so I was driving down the road today, listening to the radio, and thought how thankful I was. And I acknowledged to myself, I'm thankful every day. I want to tell you some of the things I'm thankful for. I said, listen to the radio about the California forest fires. I'm thankful for the firefighters there putting their legs on the line and doing the job that they are, giving their all. I'm sure that the board is watching over them also. Thankful for the women and men in our armed services. Thankful for our law enforcement, especially in these trying times. Thankful for our healthcare workers, first responders dealing with the pandemic, plus having to deal with the regular duties on top of that. Also thankful for the citizens making the city their home and trusting us as commissioners to make the right decisions. I'm also thankful for our friends and family being there for one another through everything that's going on, through good times and bad. Most thankful that the board is there to watch over us. So after all that, I'd be thankful if you'd bow your heads and pray with me the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
In thy name, in thy kingdom come, and will be done as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we should give those who trespass against us. Need is not in temptation, but deliver us from evil.
What you need is to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the state of New Mexico and the ZS symbol, a perfect friendship among Yeshiva de culture.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with a couple of changes in the action items. Resolution, it says, resolution 2020 dash 77, that needs to be changed to 78. Resolution 2020 dash 78 needs to be changed to 79. And resolution 2020 dash oh 79 needs to be moved to 78.
Second, motion was made by Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Gandy.
It's okay. Before you said both.
I didn't. Commissioner Gandy made the motion second to Commissioner Bernard. There's no discussion. Roll call, vote Shannon.
Mayor Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes. You'll have a motion.
Make a motion to consider minutes for regular meeting minutes of September 14th, 2020, and the special meeting minutes of September 17th, 2020, and September 24th.
Second that.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Roll call, vote Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo.
Yes. Moving on to Commissioner and staff report. White.
Mayor, Commissioner, just to give a brief update on our commercial street projects. We did the final walkthrough with San Miller Associates, our engineer, and New Mexico DOT on September 16th, two Wednesdays ago. And there was only two items that New Mexico DOT found on the project, which was the slope blankets on the east side of the road. The instructors are currently fixing that problem. And then on the curb and gutter at the very end of by New Mexico eighteen, the crack joints need to be some special compound that DOT has in their spec book, so they're waiting on that compound and backer board to come in so they can fix those. But we should be finalized on that project within the next two weeks after the bunch of assignments are taken care of. That's all I have.
Sir, any questions by the board for Black?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
The crack joints that they have to take care of, where are they located, White?
Those are on the, on the very ends of Commercial Street on the west side of the road, where it connects to New Mexico eighteen with Radin and Curb and Gutter next to Reeden Stevens. The spec book does specify that in the crack joint, they can't use that bilig board, that it has to be some kind of a backer with a compound. The instructors actually use for the crack joints, that's what they're made for, they actually use the foam boards, the bilig board. So they're going to be cutting those out, writing them out, and then putting that compound in.
Now is that going to close, is Commerce gonna be closed again, right here in the center?
No, sir.
No? Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? There's no other questions. Moving on to Garrett.
Your mayor and commission, I have nothing new to report at this time.
Does the board have any questions for Garrett? There's no questions for Garrett. Shannon?
Nothing.
Does the board have any questions for Shannon? There's no questions for Shannon. Commissioner Bowles?
No question, nothing to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, I would like to just give a big shout out to Chief Rodriguez, his staff, for getting the old pool cleaned up there, out here. It looks awesome. It was in really bad shape. They did an awesome job. Just thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Campos?
Nothing here, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gandy?
Hey, James, I know you received the email from Mr. Mitten, possibly, maybe? Yes, sir. Okay, so I didn't know, but Mr. Mitten had mentioned to me a structure that kind of laid out where people that wanted to go to either one of our cemeteries could find their loved ones via, what would you call that? Some type of, it'd be. Basically a map where. Where your veterans are laid and then where just regular people are put. I think it's a great ideal at some time, probably not right now financially, but it's something that we could look into and kind of find some numbers and then somewhere down the road, maybe do something. I don't know. I'll see if I can get James to forward that email. Guys, you can see the pictures. I kind of thought it was kind of neat, but just some, that was something I had. And then, hey, chief, police, I have a question.
Have a?
A concerned citizen on Love and Ben Burin. Where the stop sign is, is he's traveling west. There's a truck that parks right there on that, in their yard, basically. And then they park their pickup, so we can't really see traffic coming. I don't know if there was something to do there, but it just makes it pretty difficult for people to get by. That was mentioned too. All right, thank you. Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to Chief Rodriguez.
Captain, you sir.
Does the board have any questions for Chief Rodriguez? There's no question, Chief Rodriguez. Chief Lozaro?
Yes, sir. Mayor, commissioners, the fire department has put in for a grant with Durango Fire Department for their fire safety trailer, and we were awarded it, the grant for that trailer, so we should be picking that up the next month, or this next month, October, so. And that's all I have.
What kind of trailer was it, you know, I'm sorry?
Fire safety trailer.
Oh, okay. Is that grant going to be for you guys to use it, or you?
It's a, it's a huge trailer that they have, and we were one of the parts that was selected to receive it. So we'll actually bring it in and start eventually with COVID lifting up, hopefully we can start using it with the schools.
Oh, educational ones, essentially?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
That's all I have.
Is there any questions for Chief Lozaro? There's no question for Chief Lozaro. Team manager, James Williams?
Yes, sir. Mayor, commissioners, so today was our third due date for the Cares funding for businesses. We did not have any applications received. We still have a balance of unencumbered funding of around a little over $39,000. So that being said, we will not need to have a special commission meeting this Thursday. We'll go ahead and just cancel that one. But one thing that we could consider, we did get somewhat of an answer back from the state as far as our preauthorization. They have decided that they're going to change the way that the funds are sent to the city. Instead of it being a reimbursement process, it will be a dispersment process, with the city being required to keep all of the paperwork on file and to make sure that the projects conform with federal regulations, which all of the projects that we awarded funding to do meet the federal regulations. So what we did was we submitted for our first dispersment request today from the state. And we should be able to execute agreements within the next week or two with the businesses that have been awarded the first and the second round. One thing that we could do, given that we didn't receive a response, any responses today, there are more items that are eligible under the Cares funding to assist businesses. Some of these include non-owner payroll, rent, scheduled mortgage payments, and insurance payments to assist those businesses. I know that we've had a couple of folks express some interest in that. But if we wanted to open up our grant program for that, we could easily issue an amendment. That way we can at least get the funding out there to help assist some of these businesses. And other ways, since if they don't want to move to an online platform or do some physical redesign, it does expand what those businesses are eligible for. So I'm just essentially just asking for some direction tonight. It would be a very easy amendment. We would just issue an amendment to our request for grant proposals and get that out via social media and the newspapers that they're, we are expanding the program, if the commission so desires.
So go over the, the things that we would expand. Rental?
So rent payments, mortgage payments, insurance payments, and non-owner payroll, basically. That means that it would help to recoup some of the costs if they did not get any type of the triple P, the payroll protection program, or any small business loans, anything that debt didn't cover, that would be eligible for it, just to help them reimburse some of those costs. And also utilities, I'm sorry, I apologize, I was one out. Utilities would be an eligible expenditure as well for the federal guidelines. But with the way that we have our grant written right now, we were focusing on marketing, physical, or physical redesign to comply with those, comply with COVID safe practices as well as PPE. And that's what our, the online marketing and distance or remote work.
Let me ask, as far as in our first round, when we went through and discussed, some of them, we were wondering if they were going to work or not.
Right.
Because they were outside permanent fixtures and some of them.
Correct.
Are them able to go through now?
Yes, sir. That falls under the classification of the physical redesign of the business to comply with the COVID safe practices and also the fellow coworkers.
Okay. Okay. Now, as far as moving forward, what are we looking to do, seeing that we didn't have anybody put in for this time here? I understand you were saying about as far as rent and payroll.
We have a couple of different options. We can expand what our grant program, folks can apply for locally. And then another option would be if we still don't get any responses for that, we could also go back and reevaluate some of the projects that were awarded funding, which there was only two projects that received 100% of what they asked for. Some of them were cut. We can see about making up some of that difference. But that will take action by the commission to amend those, those awards.
What about some of the projects that didn't receive funding?
Well, those projects didn't receive funding because they didn't meet the criteria actions or they did not meet the criteria. So if it was an incomplete application, they would need to resubmit for it.
So apparently none of them were resubmitted?
We have not received that yet.
No, sir. Okay.
So what are the wishes of the board, to expand it or not? And that's to expand mortgage payments, rent payment?
I would say that you want to help your businesses out. It's important.
Agreed.
By any reason.
So what you said, Commissioner Campos?
Yes, I agree.
I guess that's the census of the board is to move in that direction. Thank you, sir. Is there any other questions for James Williams?
Mr. Mayor, I guess on a different subject, I noticed on, I guess, our city page or whatever we have, our city page for business, the cemetery is going to do their annual cleanup out there. And is the people, I notice it says that they're going to remove people's stuff that they put out there on the grave sites. Or how does that really work? I've had several people, you know, have people that live out of town or not even in state. You know, that's kind of first to, and I was just wondering, you know, is there any way we just weed her around that stuff? Or how does it go?
Well, Mayor, commissioners, this is actually something that occurs annually. The only difference is this year with our new interim department head, he wanted to go ahead and get the word out. And what they're mainly talking about are the items that are just laid down their own grave, not in lack of a vase or a permanent attachment to the actual headstone. These may just be flowers that even if they are artificial, they've been out there for a year. They've blown all over the place. We were just wanting to let people know that if there's stuff that is in that particular state that they do want to keep, that they need to go out there and remove, and we'll do that. But if they are in the vase that's attached to the grave marker, that's, that's something that the folks out there won't be affecting.
Okay, so they're really not robbing the grave?
No, no, sir, that's, that's, I don't know. Not to be.
That's a horrible definition, but yeah.
Not to be disrespectful, but this is, these are, are, you know, things that have been laid out there that basically are faded and, and they're, and in order for them to do a good cleanup, this is normally, a lot of the stuff is blown up against the fence. So this was just to give everybody the opportunity, if for some reason they didn't want to keep something out there that wasn't already in a permanently fixed space or something, go ahead and remove it, and then they can replace it once the cleanup's done.
Like, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I know that didn't mount properly.
Is there any other questions for James? There's no further questions. City attorney, Patrick Mann?
Mayor, commissioners, another.
Is there any questions for our city attorney? No questions. Moving on to public comment. During public comment, if you have anything that's on the agenda, please move, come forward. If not, you can bring other issues if you so please. Okay, moving on to non-action items. James?
Mayor, commissioners, in the staff summary, we kind of put what we wanted to discuss tonight. I'm Eugene Hammers, Sanders. She was pretty much a lifetime resident of Livingston. She was also an educator who taught for many years. She was also one of the hardest working members of our library board trustees that we had. And after many decades of service, she was, this commission actually gave her the honorary lifetime member title for the board trustees. She was one of those who was essential as far as getting the library to where it is today. On July 23rd, if you didn't know, Mrs. Sanders did pass away. A lot of the staff as well as members of the public, we requested, we were thinking of how we can honor Mrs. Sanders and her contribution and legacy that she left behind. So at the last library board trustees meeting, the board of trustees and the letters attached, we'd like for the commission to consider naming the library board room after Mrs. Sanders. Of course, since this is a municipal facility, we would want the city commission to take official action if this is something that they so desire. But we wanted to start this item out as a discussion item. Tried to contact the family to let them know what the request was. I'm sure that they would have no issue with this, but this is just one portion of the library that really, this is exactly where that, what that room is used for, is primarily for the board trustees meeting. But it would be a very, very inexpensive means as far as, you know, an appropriate plaque. I know that the library board said that, you know, should the commission decide to do something like this, they've come up with a lot of different ideas other than just what they call firewood on the side of the wall. It'd be something very befitting of the library, but also to honor her legacy. So if, this will be the time to discuss it, and if the commission would like to use that as a potential action item on our next commission agenda.
So it's a very good idea. She was a good lady.
James, I agree. I think knowing her as an educator for many years back, I think, I wish there was more we could do, actually. So I agree. I think it's a, it's a small token of appreciation for, for her.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Everyone here also agrees. So proceed with the action items.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to action items.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020 dash 78, approval to execute a drainage maintenance agreement between the city and the NMDOT.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Candy, second by Commissioner Campos. White?
Mayor, commissioners, in this agreement from New Mexico DOT, it roughly goes on New Mexico eighteen project from the new drainage piping that's going to go in. Everything from Jackson Street down to Avenue B is going to flow, and then it's going to go east into the property at Commercial and Avenue B. In this maintenance agreement, it states that perform, perform all non-structural maintenance on the drainage pond that's constructed, constructed as part of the project shown in exhibit one and two. All non-structural maintenance as far as cleaning out the ponds, they talked, we had to go in and talk to them. They said that about every five years, that I have to go in and kind of take the soot and debris that collects down into the ponds. Clogging of the outlet and structure after major storm events. So anything that does clog at the very end of the outlet, knowing which the pond does, everything's going to flow in from the, from the west and go out to the east by, behind the city pool in the Chaparral Park. So anything that does bind up or clog up, we will be responsible for calling a clean. Well, we did go back many times, back and forth, and we did actually sit down and have a meeting with them. But some of the stuff was over, over what we, what we could do, what we could perform. But we did come to an agreement, so as shown, approve, move forward for approval.
Thank you. Is there any questions for White?
I got a couple of questions to ask. As far as, let's say, get a whole bunch of debris and everything, or you have enough manpower or you capable of keeping that clean as far as the maintenance here?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bowles, currently right now, where, where it does flow into, we do not have, it does back up, and we do not have the proper means to get on that property and clear everything out. With the new design that is coming through, it is going to flow into the drainage pond, and the only clogging that we'll have is going to exit. This is designed for a hundred-year fund, so it's going to have to really fill up for it to overflow. So the sediment debris over time is what we'll be cleaning out. So I would definitely, I would like to be around if it didn't fill up that much and come out the other side.
Sure.
We'll have to get a lot of rain.
Yeah. So as far as manpower hours, let's say, we have, we cure a lot of manpower hours. I'm just saying, how is this going to be as far as, is this coming, as far as city funds, how is this being paid for? Or is this just regular public works funds as far as the maintenance agreement out there? Where's the money coming from on this?
It'll just be your.
Sure. So this would actually just be part of our normal city-funded operations. It's not, with this, we're dealing, we're not dealing with a lot of, you know, pipes. It's all open ground, even the outlet is an open ditch. So really, it's, it's probably going to be a two-person drop, a job, one person to run. The front end loader may be another person to run the grader and then the dump truck, and then to dispose of the soil. So it's, we already somewhat knew it at this point, just to keep it clear. So this will actually, it will probably save time. It's just every five years, we just have to make sure that if we have a gross accumulation of sediment down there, we're going to have to remove it. But it would be, it's, it would be calculated into our budget.
This pond will be similar to the one that we have off of seventeen behind the Livingston Inn?
Yes, sir, but the only difference is it would have an outlet.
Is there any other questions for White? There's no other discussion. Roll call, vote Shannon.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020 dash oh 79, approval to execute a landscape and irrigation maintenance agreement between the city and New Mexico DOT.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Candy, second by Commissioner Bowles. White?
As a state, so this is another agreement between Mexico DOT and the city for the landscaping improvements going on in Mexico eighteen. The improvements going from Avenue A heading north all the way up to Jefferson Street. Rebewarecation of all the plants, trees, shrubbery, shrubbery, everything. The city is going to take on full responsibility of the maintenance and landscaping, the irrigation system. landscaping, the irrigation system, the utilities pay for the water, the electrical and everything in this agreement. And we have, everything's going to be brand new. When they do come in, they're putting in full brand new irrigation system, new power pole, everything. So, it will be up to date, and everything will be brand new.
Is there any questions for White?
Yes. As far as existing vegetation that we have, there are trees and everything along the streets, and they're going to be taken down?
There's some, I believe, that are going to be taken out, and some that are going to be added. I know that some are going to be taken out in their design because of widening out the sidewalks and the dry paths.
And what about stuff, let's say, like at the library and Fran Ashley and that? Is that going to be included in the watering that you're going to be taking care of, or is that separate from itself?
Separate. That, anything that's within the state's right of way, which Fran Ashley and the library are, are outside of the state's right of way, so that will all stay.
So, any new stuff that you put in, you're going to be responsible for?
Correct.
Yes.
Sounds good. Any other questions? There's no other questions. Roll call, vote Shannon.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Bowes?
Yes.
Mr. Compos?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2020-080, authorizing disposal of certain records for the city retention schedule.
Motion was made by Commissioner Candy, second by Commissioner Bow. James?
Yes, sir. So, this is actually, when we adopted our records policy, several, I think it was back in 2015, we adopted records retention policy which follows the state guidelines. So, we have old job applications that we kept on file that are ready for destruction. Those were received between 2016 and 2017. We also have some park reservation forms and old waivers of liability. In our finance department, there are old copies of checks from 2012 to 2014, as well as what we call our water books and water register tapes. Those are all eligible for destruction and do need to be destroyed. Let's make room for stuff.
On that, do we just hire somebody up straight then?
No, actually, we, yeah, sure, I was here.
Oh. Is there any questions regards this resolution?
So, that's all done and announced?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So, nobody's going to be able to see city records or anything?
Okay.
Yes. There's no other discussion? Go ahead.
I had a question for James. Who oversees that process, James, if it's in-house?
Joanna, our office manager, will, yeah, I'm confused there. I am very confused. No, Joanna Burra is the office manager, will oversee that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other questions? There's no other questions. Roll call, vote Shannon.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Compos?
Yes.
Mr. Bowes?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider accounts payable.
Motion was made by Commissioner Compos, second by Commissioner Bow. Gary?
Yes, your mayor and commission, we have the payables list before you. The single largest expense is on the front, the $428,000 to Constructors, Inc. I don't know if this is our final payment, but it's real close to it. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer any of them on the list.
Gary, what is, Mr. Compos, what is Gary, Axon Enterprises, $26,000?
That has to do with the software that the police have for the evidence, maintaining their evidence. It's an annual maintenance contract that we're paying for.
Okay. All right, very good.
How often do you, is that yearly, is that?
Annually, yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, that's an annual expense, as well as now it's required by the state law.
James, what software was that? I couldn't tell.
Axon, A-X-O-N.
Yeah, I thought I heard the chief mention a specific hardware.
I'm sorry, that's actually for Body Cam Storage.
Okay, I got you. Very good, thank you.
Are you going to do that like every September, September it's going to be done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Gary, I got a question on the Junior Library Guide, step four.
What was the name again?
Junior Library Guide.
Yes, the Junior Library Guide. That is part of our library, and if I recall correctly, it's an annual subscription. Just looking it up on the maintenance list to get more details. What's the dollar amount on that one?
$1,900, $1,950. It's like for kids' books, it's
Yeah, she doesn't give me a very good description, just that it's for books for the library.
Gary, this is Christian Compos. What is Stericycle Inc.? I hadn't seen them before, I don't think. $2,000.
And here I've got that one. Christian Compos, Stericycle is the bio-waste firm that we are required to use. We get rid of all of our medical waste that we generate.
Okay. Okay, I got that. Is that like from ambulance services?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Is there any more questions by the board?
Just the last one on the page, Work.
Yeah, is that Palm or Works?
IWorks. That is our code management software.
Figure of software.
Yes.
Is there any other questions? Gary?
I have no questions.
There's no other questions. Call vote, Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mayor Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Councilor's vote is approved. Do I have a bottom motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Compos, second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any other discussion? There's no other discussion. Roll call, vote Shannon.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Compos?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good evening, everyone.